Hi guys, we are going to call this meeting to order. I'm gonna ask Petrie to lead us in the pledge. Let's stand for the pledge, guys.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome the Whitmore Prescott 6th grade class with us today. Um, we have roll call, please.
Jenny David.
Here.
Roger Mayhew. Charles Wiltsy.
Wasn't.
Uh, Mark Serbrook.
Here.
Craig Scott.
Phil. How many sounds? Hi guys, how to turn it on?
I just push the button.
Okay. We got a new speaker system. It's time in use, so bear with us.
Does that make it better?
Yeah.
Yes. I have sitting with me Lena Hudson and Mary Jane. Any additions or corrections to the agenda?
I think Mary Jane's with me.
Oh, is she?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause I don't want Charlie.
Any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Do we have the closed session on?
We do not.
We had, um, closed session.
Alright, make a motion to accept it with the flood edition.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott. Any support?
Support.
Commissioner Serbrook, were you, did you hear Commissioner Serbrook, we're gonna add a close session?
I did.
Are we gonna add that underneath of, uh, between 15 and 16? So we'll make that 16 and adjournment 17. All in favor of approving the agenda with the presenter, with the stated changes?
Yes.
Say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Declarations conflicts of interest. Any commissioners?
No.
None.
Revealed minutes. We have the November 25th, 2025 regular meeting minutes.
Make a motion with previous minutes.
Clear. Oh, Commissioner Wiltsy? We have a motion from Commissioner Wiltsy.
Support.
Support from Commissioner Serbrook. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item 4C, December 4th, 2025 committee of the whole meeting minutes. Motion from Commissioner Scott slash Mary Jane?
Support.
Support. Support from Commissioner Wiltsy. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 4C, December 4th, 2025 committee of the whole opposed meeting minutes. We were just handed these.
I've read the minutes and signed, make a motion to approve it.
We have a motion from Commissioner, um, Wiltsy. Support from Commissioner Scott.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I just have to go back to the clerk, guys. Is it me?
Yeah, Brett moves around too much.
So we are right here under public comment. Can you read that? Yep.
Public comment on agenda item matter, matters.
So what we're doing is we're asking the public in the room initially if they have any comment, anything to say on, um, on agenda item matters only. Is there any public comment in the room? And then we also have Zoom, so we also have to ask them. Any public comment on the phone? No public comment? Public, uh, correspondence. We received correspondence from Northeast Michigan Regional Council on Aging Meeting Minutes. Those have been received and filed. Item 7, consent agenda. How would you guys like to take these?
Only three of them.
Pardon me?
There's only three, you wanna do them individually?
Sure, if you guys would like to.
Sure.
Item 7A, we have resolution to approve a federal financial internal controls and procedures policy.
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the resolution.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott.
Support.
Support from Commissioner Serbrook. Any further discussion? Uh, this resolution is sponsored, since the kids weren't here, I'm going to read this. This resolution was sponsored by Treasurer Karen Paglowski. Perspective recipients of federal funds must be effective administrative and financial internal controls. This policy will bring the county in compliance with Title II U.S. Code of Federal Regulations, Part 200, OMB Uniform Guidance. Karen, do you have anything to add to that?
I do not, other than thank you for helping us become a better county.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott, support from Commissioner Serbrook. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item 7B, resolution to accept a paving quote.
Are you gonna read it first, or you won't?
Um, this resolution is sponsored by Parks and Recreational Committee. It approves a bid for a project at the Secret Campground in RV Park that will enhance the barrier-free status of campsites 39 and 40. This project will have a budget of $20,570 and will be paid for with a DNR grant fund and a contribution from the, uh, DDA. That's gotta be enough, that's not the right amount.
That's just for this part of the project.
That's just the paving, that's not, it doesn't include.
Okay. Motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution.
Motion, Commissioner Scott.
Support.
Support from Commissioner Serbrook. Any further discussion? Since money's involved, we gotta do a roll call vote. Roll call vote.
Uh, Charles Wiltsy.
Yes.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Item 7C, resolution to accept an electrical quote. This resolution is sponsored by Parks and Recreational Committee. It approves a bid for a project at the Secret Campground in RV Park that will enhance the electrical system at the park. This project will have a budget of $162,769.20 and will be paid for with the DNR grant funds and a contribution from the DDA.
I'll make the motion to accept the resolution.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott, support from Commissioner Wiltsy, further discussion?
Uh, last week, we talked about the copper wire versus, uh, aluminum. I called Eddie Kay over to Meddler Electric for his opinion on it, and he said that there would be no problem at all putting aluminum in the campground. He said most campgrounds are, are wired like that. So this resolution does, uh, reflect that change.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Mark Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Charles Wiltsy.
Yes.
Uh, new business, Sean Petrie, Core ISD Superintendent. He's an ISD update. Hi, Mr. Petrie, thanks for coming.
Thank you for having me, appreciate it. I've got some handouts, I don't know if you guys got the ones, but, um, and also for anybody who would like in the audience, this is in regards to what the ISD, which is, uh, the ISD property of Ogma County, Roscommon County. So I'll have those available, or if you wanna, if you need some commissioners to get my. It'll only take a few minutes, and I probably should grab one of those for myself for talking points, thanks. About every two or three years, I try to get out and about, even though I hope that everyone's been seeing, like, the Core Corner in the paper, if you've had an opportunity to read that. I put out articles, et cetera, to, uh, all of the, uh, people to see what we're doing, some prospects about education. For the students, Whitmore Prescott, correct? So your ISD would be IRESA. There's kind of a county split. So Core is adjacent to them, we do a lot of partnerships together. One of the things I like to share with the commissioners and others is we did that walk, we go around with a one pager. And this is kind of services that we have actually increased over the last eight years and continue to increase for our schools. Uh, some of the talking points to look at it. You can look at top, what does an ISD do? Really what we do is we serve over 7,000 students in the four county range, provide professional development learning. So what we have started now is we bring all of the teachers, professionals, all the staff, over 500. We do a full day professional development. We do committees all year long. We do book studies with, uh, parents as well as with, uh, teaching staff. So we've really expanded professional development per se for our teachers, for our communities. One of the things that people, some might like, some might not, but, uh, Core ISD did enter, as all the schools this year, to exit cell phones from the schools. So that has been a big initiative that we worked on last year as superintendents. Sat down, and this year I've heard, I always ask, cause there's that honeymoon period. Uh, good, bad, or indifferent, it's been going very well. What we found is, uh, large increase in students communicating. I know they did it through text, but talking face-to-face now. When they're in the cafeterias, et cetera, a lot more interaction in the classrooms. We're trying to see over next year, two things. Number one, does discipline start to drop because kids aren't connecting sometimes to that? And I know I'm speaking to kids, and welcome, by the way. The greatest audience ever, I love talking to yous in 6th grade, correct? Ah, halfway through, just about, just about there, fantastic. But we found, we're looking at, will discipline decrease and will the data scores increase? Because we're able to be more engaged. So that's yet to be seen when we go through this process, but so far it's been very successful. Um, that's part of our instructional services department. Our special education, if you've ever seen the center base that we have up at Core, we did a full remodel. Uh, we were able to be financially sound enough instead of going back to the tax base. We're looking at, we did a 10-year bond to pay it off in six. But our, our facilities, we did a lot of infrastructure work in the facilities, but we had to do, we had a, a large warehouse. We took that warehouse, connected the building, and we put classrooms in there because we've expanded and we had to spread out what we do. And for those who see the Core buses that go by taking students up to Roscommon, that's where we work with students who may have needs, special needs, that the schools are unable to assist with. So that's another department we work with. We've upgraded our facilities to make sure they have proper facilities. We also work with adults, special needs. They come every day, uh, in the other part of the building. We're one of the only ISDs that basically have it from birth all the way through. So we did some renovation in that building as well because they deserve to have nice facilities too. So if you ever wanna see it, I'd love to take you through and show it. In the spring, we'll have an open house. You can see the facility and how it's set up for all of our students and staff. Another one is early childhood. We also work with a lot of preschool. Uh, kind of some interesting things, we have several teams there. They, they actually go into the centers, they work with them. That's GSRP. Uh, we'll work with daycare centers as well as in the schools, there might be preschools. And we oversee that from that, and all the way integration into the, uh, the kindergarten system and on through graduation. Uh, one of the other components that we really are heavily with is our Care Tech Ed. As you know, we got a grant from the state of Michigan to build a tech center. So that is housed at the Roscommon Middle School. Um, it's, the programs are full, which has been nice. Uh, I appreciate that fact. One of the greatest things we're really proud of is we do have, we have one of the only ISDs that have an early middle college model, which means students can obtain their associates if they go to their 13th year. That means a year past graduation, they can go to Curtin Community College and the state of Michigan and Core. So we pay for the first two years for them. And then the last year, the state of Michigan will pay for them and get their full associates. One of the popular programs is our public safety program. So students can go through and get their full MCOS and be certified to work as sheriff's deputies or other, uh, first responders throughout the four counties or above. That's helped out a lot, we like that. Uh, we have a welding program does the same. I have to tell it, I thought of my, uh, I have one son that's an officer, he went through the program. I have another son that's a welder and he went through the program, both making good livings right now. Uh, and it's been very successful. So we like to let people know we have opportunities for kids. So we've really grown in the department of, uh, a lot of connections with our districts. We have a leadership committee. I bring all the districts in. Two people from each district who walk about curriculum. Services we provide, things we can do for better professional development for our schools. We also have a student support network system, which they come in, they sit down. We talk about, what are we doing for mental health? What are we doing for behaviors? What are we doing in the schools to assist with that? And there's no, uh, no doubt that it's gonna change anyway, but it's a different system than a lot of us went to school through. So there's a lot of services you provide for them, but I will say this, kids are still, sorry guys, the best. Because they're a lot of fun. You've gotta be, have the niche to really enjoy all you go through in the schools and classrooms. So, I don't, I could go on and on, but I wanted to put the one pager in front of you. I have cards, if you'd like my card, I would welcome any conversation. I'd welcome you to come up and look at the facilities, to look at the tech center and see what we're doing currently with students. And you can see the programs that are being offered at the bottom. You can see what we also offer in special ed and instructional services. And basically, our task as an ISD is anything a school can't do, we're supposed to help and assist them to do it. So we do have tax base. The one thing I'll say is our millages, and I say it every time, we are the lowest millage gathering ISD in the entire state of Michigan. We get one, about 1.2 mills. That's if Headley doesn't hit us. Some ISDs levy as high as eight mills. So we're proud of the work we do with the least amount that we gather from, um, basically at this point. So I'll take questions and I'll go ahead and sit back down.
Any questions for Mr. Petrie? Commissioner Wiltsy?
Um, I don't really have a question. I know a couple of years ago, we met up there, I was at MSU Extension meeting.
Yeah.
I'm just a huge supporter of, you know, what you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Our kids, our future, you know, there's obviously a lot of jobs now and they're really shorthanded with a lot of jobs that these schools are teaching our kids. I know you do a great job up there, so thank you, keep up.
We appreciate that, and we'll take any kind, we, you gotta think that we work for the four counties. And really what we do is we assist the districts. The one thing I'm very proud of, I know that there, people know that there was conflict in the past between the ISD and the districts way back. That's gone. We've connected, we bind, I meet with all the superintendents every week, one, for an hour a week, sometimes two, to walk through services that be provided. I also share the budget, what do we wanna spend things on? Because this is really things that are supposed to flow back out to them. And we've been financially sound in how we're working with that, so I appreciate that. We'd like to grow with our Care Tech Ed, and we're gonna continue to go that route. But at this point, you wanna get quality before anything else. And I really feel good about what's going on ISD-wide. I know there's a lot of budget conversations statewide with state budgets, federal budgets. The biggest thing we tell our schools is, let's focus on the kids and all the political stuff. That's what we're paid to do. We'll deal with the budgets, we'll deal with how this is gonna be handled, et cetera. Is it fun? No, and you all know what I'm talking about. So I appreciate your time, and, uh, any other questions?
Commissioner Serbrook?
None, thank you, Sean.
Kids, do you have any questions?
Yeah, ask me a question.
Actually, one of the kids, come on, somebody.
Have any questions?
Quiet.
Go ahead.
Please, don't be shy, you, oh, can't do that.
What's a mill?
That's a great question. So you think about funding, everybody wants to have money, right? So in your ISDs and your schools have bonds and things that they go to the voters and ask for extra money for renovations to Whitmore and things. You've seen them when they've rebuilt different parts of it. You can levy tax base against the households if they agree to do those projects. So the mills is called a millage, and that's when we can go to the taxpayer. And basically what it has is based on the value of their house, a little chunk of that when it goes to local tax, they have to pay, and you know about that. That then comes back to the ISD that we put back into the ISD in the schools. So, that's a great question, that's a fantastic question.
And here, see, on our taxes.
Yep. So you will see yours for IRESA, and others who live on the other side of Ogma County would see it for Core. Depends where your boundaries are.
Any other questions? Thank you for the annual update, Mr. Petrie.
Absolutely, have a wonderful day, thank you.
You too. Uh, item 8B, claims, $635,202.41. Can I have a motion to?
I'll make a motion to pay the claims.
Motion from Commissioner Scott?
Support.
Support from Commissioner Serbrook. You guys, I believe, were, the two of you were paying, you have the floor.
The biggest, the biggest expense this month, or this, this period of time, is $360,000. And $360.40, and that's our insurance bill, our annual insurance bill. And the umbrella is about $182,000 of that, and then it breaks down, uh, to liability, fleet policies, there's a number of different fleet policies. There's a liability policy in there. So it's the entire, the entire insurance that we pay for, workman's comp is in that also. That's another very large one. So, um, it was a pretty big hit when I first looked at it. Holy smokes. 360, that's like, that's like a third of a mill. Just, just, uh, doesn't make the insurance.
Commissioner Serbrook?
In addition to that, there, um, we paid $25,000 for our audit, $20,000 to the EDC. Buildings and grounds, I took and just broke out what the, uh, electrical costs were for this building. The, yeah, it's a lot of money for electricity. The gas bill was only $1,168, so that was quite good. The old jail, the gas bill for that was just $53. The annex was $190, holeover was 92, so just to give you an idea. So with the indigent council, that, uh, North Coast Legal was $30,040. And I did talk to Will Engelman, we discussed that at committee of the hall. I did, uh, reach out to Mr. Engelman, he is going to take and make himself available at one of our committee of the hall meetings in January, we just need to firm up a date yet. So he will come in and do a presentation, let us know what that, I believe is the MIDC grant, what that, uh, all entails, what they do and stuff, so, um. We had inmate housing. Gladwin was $22,656, that was 708 jail days. Medical for that was $3396. There was a doctor slash nurse bill for 115. Airnak housing was $960, that was 30 days for one inmate. Claire County was $6,160 for 176 days. Um, our local meal costs that we got from rancheros plus their breakfast things was $793.35. We had our quarterly, uh, allotment to MSU for $23,637. The quarterly medical examiner. That's about it.
Questions? Thank you, Commissioner Serbrook. I appreciate that breakdown. And I think it's information that I find interesting. Questions? No? Roll call vote. Craig Scott?
We're gonna say yes.
Yes.
Jenny David?
Yes.
Charles Wiltsy?
Yes.
Mark Serbrook?
Yes.
So what that means, guys, is claims, there's two commissioners that have to review claims every two weeks. Those are bills for the last two weeks for the county. We just, um, all approved for $635,202.41. That's for a two-week period. So, uh, item nine, unfinished business. Chat Janek with an update on the search for a new county administrator. Chat?
For those of you that don't know, our previous county administrator, um, was with us for five years. He recently took a new position. He gave us a 30-day notice, and in the meantime, we were able to find an interim who is Fabian, but we are currently in search of a new county administrator slash controller. So this gentleman that's going to speak in a minute is helping us with this process. Chat, you're open. Got him, man?
There, okay.
Chat, there you go, Chat.
I can hear you now. Good morning, everyone. I don't think you can see me, but I'll, uh, let's see. There, there. Morning, everyone, and welcome to the students. It's good to see students at the meeting, too. As a former superintendent, it's always nice to see students participate in the process. So thank you for this opportunity. Uh, let me just give an update on the search and talk about the next steps and some decisions that the board has to make. As you know, the search started on, uh, November 24th. The job was posted about 30 different websites. The ones, uh, that I think will draw the most interest are the professional websites, which is the Michigan Association of Counties, the Michigan Government Finance Officers Association, Michigan Municipal League, Michigan Township Association, Michigan for Hire, Michigan Leadership Institute, and the International City County Managers Association, ICMA. And then ads were run in the local newspapers. As of this morning, I have received 10 applicants for the position. Uh, eight are from the state of Michigan, two are outside of the state of Michigan, but they have ties to Michigan in the past. The deadline is December 29th, so, uh, over the holiday season. And so, uh, I'm optimistic about the quality of the candidates. It's still early. I think I mentioned before, my experiences with doing searches the last three years is the majority of the applicants come in the last week of the process. People wanna talk to their spouses about it, look at options and so forth. And so, uh, I think we're on target where we should be. I'm hoping there'll be more candidates coming in, which I'm guessing there will. I have seen, uh, phone calls from people that are interested in the position, and they're obviously looking at the options, thinking that they wish to apply. So I think it's going well in that respect. Uh, I've been sending you weekly updates on how many people look at the sites. I'm, uh, got my computer pointed out, uh, now. As of this morning, 2,209 people have casually looked at the posting, and 204 people have actually clicked on it and read the details about the options. And like I said, 10 people have applied for the position so far. Uh, in terms of next steps, the deadline is December 29th. So by the 31st, I will take all the applicants, put them in a PDF format, and send them to you, and let's talk about the process. And there's no right or wrong way. Some commissioners wish to see all of the applicants and review them. Other times, commissioner says, just give us the ones that are qualified. So we need to have a discussion on that. You'll get those by December 31st. Uh, I'm hoping we could have a meeting the first week of January that you as a board can screen the applicants, decide which ones you use, you wish to interview. I've done it where there's been as few as four and as many as eight. But once again, depends on the quality of candidates and how many people you wish to interview. Normally, those interviews are about an hour apiece. In the December 31st, uh, update to you, I'll provide you a list of sample questions. Usually give you about 20 questions that you can ponder, look at. Uh, normally, the interviews are 50 minutes, five zero. And you should ask the same questions to all the candidates. Then normally, the next step after that, you decide which ones you wish to do as a finalist. I always recommend that you do a second round of interview. That's more of a dialogue with the commissioners to make sure it's the right fit for both sides. So it's a two-way process. You want the candidates to really be committed to Ogma County, and you wanna make sure it's the right fit. And normally, what I also highly recommend is that you would do a meet and greet. So the employees, the elected officials, sometimes the public is invited to meet with the candidates before they interview with the board. So that will take place usually mid-January. So depending on your schedules, and those dates are tentative depending on your schedules, cause I know a lot of you have commitments. But normally, uh, in a perfect world, you'd get those, uh, applications by the end of the year. You'd have some time to look at them. We'd have a special meeting the first week of January, determine who you wish to interviews. Do interviews the middle of January, determine who you wanna do as, uh, final candidates for the position. And hopefully, make a selection and enter negotiations by the end of the month, depending on your schedules and when you can meet. So that's just a brief overview of the process. Uh, do you have any questions about that? And I'll be, I'll be at all the meetings when you do the review and when you do the interviews also. And I'll give you sample questions, like I said, for the first and second rounds.
Questions for Chat, Commissioners, Commissioner Wiltsy?
No, I, I sent Chad, uh, an email the other day just saying that I would like to see, you know, all the resumes and applications we get. I'd like to see, see them all, so.
Commissioner Scott?
Well, I, I, I've had a number of calls. I don't know if anybody else has, but I've had a number of calls after the, uh, the ad came out in the paper. And, I mean, some of these guys I know, they call me up, they, they think that this is like a store manager's position or something. I mean, a couple of guys called, hey, what do I gotta have? I said, complete knowledge of all laws in Michigan. And, uh, it, this is, this is like the CEO of a major corporation. This is not just the manager at the parts store, you know? And I've had a couple of guys call me about that. So if there's somebody out there that's gonna send in a resume to Chat that doesn't have basic qualifications, I just do not see that one, you know? I mean, if they don't have a degree in something, you know? Like, the one fella called me, I've known him for quite a few years, I mean, he just had a whole different outlook on what this job was. So, you know? If, if we're good, right now it's ten, but I believe, just like Chat says, I think most of them will come in in the last week. That's what happened before, too, so.
Commissioner Cerber?
I would just assume see just the ones that are qualified. I don't want to see resumes from people that aren't qualified. There's, why waste our time if they're not qualified? So I, I trust Chat to take and be able to weed those out, so that's my preference.
I'm gonna agree with that, and we're gonna be honest, because the, um, it was pretty basic. I mean, as far as like educational status, it, it, it could have been much more narrow, which I don't disagree. I think that will help with the number of applicants. But as far as them making even the criteria to apply, I only want to see those individuals. Because of the, the criteria overall, in my opinion, was, was fairly broad. Is that the only answer you needed at this point in time, Chat?
Yeah, so I'll assume for now, we will screen those candidates. I will tell you, and you're absolutely right, about two-thirds of the people that apply for these jobs will not meet the qualification. That's pretty standard of the searches I've done the last three years. This is a very unique job. You need the right people skills, you need the right technical skills. And I'll be glad to screen them for you in advance. Anyone who meets the qualifications, you'll see those resumes. They all may not be the right person, but at least they meet the qualifications. And then we can have a dialogue on which ones you wish to interview. Under Michigan law, candidates do have the right to keep their application confidential. And several of them have already requested that. And so we do have the right to go into closed session to review those applicants. Then we'll come out of closed session, have a public discussion on who you wish to interview, and then go from there.
And I appreciate the weekly updates that we are, are all getting.
And, and those will continue through the end of the month.
Thanks, thank you. Item ten, Administrator's Report. Fabian?
Just wanted to advise the board that we finalize the, and release the RFP for the HVAC services for this building. I met with the elected officials and department head in a, a department head meeting this past Monday, gathering information for a request for documents from the Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity related to some death certificates and police reports. Working on paperwork for the Veterans Memorial Park Subcommittee. Trying to receive a donation of a combat, combat, combat material for the memorial park, whether, you know, like a tank or a piece of equipment that they would, they would like to have at the park. And I'm reviewing DDA documents to become familiar with the history of DDAs in Ogama County. And if anybody has any questions, I'm more than willing to answer.
Questions for Fabian, Commissioner Cerber?
I don't have any, thank you.
Mr. Scott?
The audit, is it finished yet?
There's a couple of things that we have to wrap up, but it's not completely finished yet.
It should be done by the end of this month, you think?
Um, yes, I think so.
Yeah, they indicated one nail here.
They have not, to me, I don't know if they've, they've...
Should they have not said anything?
But it's record time so far. To be finished by the end of the year. Holy smokes, I'd never say that.
Wow.
Well, they, they said that their team didn't even camp out here like before. Two days, two days camped out here. I'm like, I, the other team, I'd love to be present to them, too. Let's, anyone, all right, thank you.
Commissioner Woldsey?
I'm all set.
Thanks, Fabian.
You're welcome.
Uh, item eleven, elected officials and department head reports. We have no more elected officials and department heads that we're gonna have to come up and introduce themselves and maybe give us a little brief scenarios for what their, their office does, what their job entails. So we have IT.
My name is Tom Spencer, IT Director for Ogama County. I maintain all the technology here, servers, all the networking, computers maintained for all the departments. And I have Dale with me today. He's been manning the Zoom a little bit while I've been doing some technical difficulties on the new audio system that we just had installed yesterday. So any questions for me?
Any questions for Tom? Everything.
More about that stuff than I do.
Tom?
Yes, sir.
Do we know when they're gonna come back and maybe troubleshoot what are issues with the system?
Actually, when we go into closed session, I'm gonna plug the couple mics back in and we'll see how things go.
Okay.
Her panel's now live, so.
Okay.
They are gonna come back and mount the cabinet within the next couple of weeks.
Anyways, with our GPS, our security, our i-computers, what am I missing?
I think that pretty well sums it up. Yep, on all the meetings, yeah.
Yep, when we get done, please go on and watch yourself. They could be on there right now looking at you.
Thanks, Tom.
You're welcome.
Randy?
I'm Randy Booth, the Ogama County Equalization Director. This is Elena, she is helping us today. And during the past month, we had all the help prepare and get all the winter tax bills out, so tax collection can start. And the studies are done, I'll be submitting them to the assessors and to the state of Michigan this afternoon. And so we're finally done with that process. In our office, we prepare the tax bills for all the local units in the county. We do studies of all the commercial, industrial, agricultural properties and determine values for the county in the year moving forward based on the sales we've had in the last two years.
Questions for Randy? Questions? Commissioner Scott?
When, when my shadow comes by your office later, would you explain the mill issue?
I will.
That's a good question.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Denise?
Denise Simmons, Ogama County Register of Deeds. Our off, and Abby is my shadow today. Our office maintains and records all the land records for the county. Our records go back to the mid-eighteen hundreds, so anytime you buy, sell, or mortgage land, it's done through our office. Any questions?
I need to ask anything, but that was...
It's okay, it doesn't hurt.
Sounds like it does.
It doesn't.
No questions?
Okay.
Thank you, sure.
Good morning. My name is Brian Gilbert, I'm the Sheriff of Ogama County. I'm being shadowed by Colton today. We're gonna go over there and get a, a brief look at what we do over there. My job is to enforce the law in Ogama County. I work hand in hand with the prosecuting attorney, Ladonna, you all met her earlier. Colton, you have anything you want to ask or anything?
Any questions, guys, for the sheriff, students? It's your time.
When's the great, when's, is graduation already happened for the...
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow's graduation.
Tomorrow, I'm looking so forward to that.
I knew it was on the horizon.
Yes, we had a busy week, yep.
Okay.
And this last couple of days, we've been extremely busy with slide-offs, car accidents because of the snowfall. So I urge everybody to slow down and give yourself a lot of opportunity to stop, so. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
How's Dakota Masters doing, our new animal patrol officer?
He's, he's doing well. I mean, he's, he's young, but he's so willing to learn. Yeah, he's motivated really well, so I think we're gonna be good. And like we had talked about, I'm gonna try to bring him down to maybe these townships and introduce him. And I think that'd be a good, good idea to do, so.
And he's working Thursday through Monday?
Yeah, and he's, he's picking up weekends, which is huge, because we get a lot of complaints on the weekends. So when, when he was willing to do that, I'm excited to hear that, so, yeah. It's gonna work.
Is it Thursday through the Monday?
Yeah. Yep, yeah, twenty-five hours a week, so, which he could use more, but, but we'll go, we'll, we'll see where that brings us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Clerk?
You good?
Brett Gilner, you're Ogama County Clerk. This is Addison, she is my shadow. And I have to say, you guys are the shyest, quietest group we have ever had here.
By far.
By far. Don't be afraid to talk. Don't be afraid to speak up and... So my office handles all the birth records for everybody that's born in Ogama County. So we have birth records, any of the death certificates. If any of your family members have passed away in Ogama County, we have the record here. If any parents have been divorced or family, anything. We also have court records for felony cases, which are the bigger criminal cases. We handle civil court, which is, like, anything that's not criminal, anything that doesn't hurt somebody. We take minutes for all of these meetings, so I tried, tried to get Addison to, to take part in doing that, but she's just too shy. So we take minutes for all the meetings, and then help out wherever we can.
You have a number of permits, too, at your office?
Say that again?
Permits? Number of permits at your office?
Uh, we have concealed pistol permits. We have, uh, that...
Marriage licenses.
Marriage licenses, yep.
Can you marry?
And I marry people. Yep. So that's what I do for an update for you guys. I just have to say that it's been great working with Fabian. I feel like we have a really good system going right now, and it's, it's going good. So, thank you. I have a couple Zoom set up for quotes for electreevers for storage. Those are tomorrow, so I'll have more information on that. And then the auditor is probably waiting on me because I had an issue with one of my bond account spreadsheets. But we have it all figured out. I just have to send the final number to them today, and I believe that's all they're waiting for, so.
Questions for the clerk? Questions? Thank you.
You guys are so shy.
Friday, come on up.
Good morning, everyone. Karen Picklowski, you're Ogama County Treasurer.
My name is Kaylee Kennedy, and the treasurer's office report is on the iPad. Thank you.
For the treasurer's office, as you know, you're gonna all come around to the office, so you'll get a little bit more in-depth information. But just for a brief overview of the county treasurer's office, I am the chairperson of the Ogama County Land Bank Authority, taking care of blighted properties in the community. We are the collection of delinquent property taxes. We sell dog licenses, and I am the fiduciary of the idle funds for investing dollars for the county. You'll learn more when you come to the office.
Questions for the treasurer?
Karen and I have a question. I was at West Branch Township last night, and they, there was a parcel of property, and they decided that they wanted...
Great.
To keep it.
Great.
They asked me, did the county want it? And I said...
So Addison?
And I, and I told them, it would probably go, if, if they turned it down, it would probably go to the land bank. Was I correct in that statement, or was I not?
You were correct.
Okay.
That's where it was headed. So the, what Mark is referring to is the last parcel that was unsold at our tax foreclosure auction this fall. We had a property in the city of West Branch and a property in West Branch Township that did not sell. The city is taking the parcel that is within their city limits, happens to be adjacent to the DPW property, so it works out great for them. And I was waiting for the West Branch Township Board meeting for them to make a decision. By statute, if it is unsold, it automatically reverts back to the local unit. Unless they pass a resolution that they do not accept the property, then it stays in ownership of the foreclosing governmental unit, which is the county treasurer. And then I have the decision to keep it within the county's ownership or to transfer it to the county land bank, which is where it was headed in the next step, had they not accepted the property. But that's great news. They'll have the property, and then all properties are accounted for and taken care of into new ownership after the tax sale.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Questions?
No?
So every, every meeting as well, which is every two weeks, we get reports from the elected officials and department heads. Do you guys have, what is an elected official? Any idea? Pardon me? Any students in the room, what's an elected official? How do they get that position? Would Commissioner like to explain it? Commissioner Scott?
Okay.
Elected.
Elected official.
Okay, no, out of the, out of the officials that came up here, so...
Hold on, Commissioner Scott, I think we have an answer.
Oh, okay. Right. Exactly, exactly.
I thought you said elected official.
Elected. So we just got reports from the elected officials and department head reports. The elected officials, I was asking what that, what that, how do they, okay, so how do they get that position?
They get voted by their county?
Yep. Individuals in their county. They have to run for the position. They run a campaign, which is a lot of work, a lot of time, a lot of money, something obviously they're very passionate about. And then they get voted in, if you live in Ogama County.
The Gourley Bayou is our president of our sixth grade.
Council, she's our president. So did you run for the position?
Yes.
How did you do that?
Um, we, we did a vote, and we ran for whatever position we wanted.
Okay, how did you campaign? What was your strategy?
Told people why I'd be a good president.
And what was that reasoning?
Do you remember your speech at all?
That I'm a good leader, and I could...
Oh, that's excellent.
So...
So are you enjoying it?
Yes.
Why did you do it?
Um, I always liked being...
In charge?
Yes.
Relate to that, I know somebody just like that.
So, my job is to keep all these guys in line and keep us focused and moving forward in a professional, timely manner and try to...
And boy, does she work at it, too, because some of us just...
We're just not the ordinary people.
We are not.
It's, it's sometimes a little more difficult than others. So that is what the chairman does, tries to run this meeting in this type, this layout. And try to keep us out of trouble, from a legal standpoint. Typically, and we have one of our legal consultants actually on the phone today, we'll be talking to later. Questions? So how do we get this position? So we're, we're called commissioners, and I'm gonna let you two of the commissioners get their report here in a few minutes, and we'll come back to that question. Management of the floor, any, any commissioners?
The management floor, no, no.
Motion for adoption? Commissioners reports. Commissioner Cerber? Would you like to inform the students what area you cover?
I will, yes. I'm District Four, which covers the majority of West Branch Township, Horton Township, and Edwards Township. I sit on several different committees, so I'm gonna give the report in regards to the meetings that I have attended in the last two weeks. First was budget, as a result of some discussions that we had of budget, that kind of ties into another meeting that Commissioner Woldsey and I had with the Ray Family Animal Shelter Board. We are gonna be getting some data from them that I think will be beneficial to the members of the board as well as the public. We appropriate on a monthly basis twelve thousand five hundred dollars to the animal shelter to house stray dogs that are picked up in the county. So we'll be getting some more data from them. Very fruitful meeting. We, we were there, what, about an hour, Charlie, something?
Yeah, forty-five.
Yeah, so it was a good dialogue back and forth. I attended NIMSCA, which is Northeast Michigan Community Service Agency. They do Head Start programs. That's probably the biggest one that everybody knows of, they're very involved in the Head Start program. They provide winterization projects. They do council on aging, Meals on Wheels, things like that. They provide a lot of funding for that. That meeting was in Grayling this time, the core county area is, I believe it's thirteen counties in Northeast Michigan. And then they have, they, they got some, actually, St. Clair County, they're doing some Head Start programs down in St. Clair County, believe it or not. Plus some others in the, in the thumb. That was Friday. I attended Edwards Township on Monday. Pretty much business as usual for Edwards Township. West Branch Township, I touched on a little bit with county treasurers to the property there. West Branch Township, and I need to make sure that Mr. May, he was aware of this, because he also represents West Branch Township, a small section of it. They have changed their meeting time for November, December, January, February, and March to four o'clock instead of their normal six o'clock. concludes my report. I did claims as well, so. Reviewed all the county bills with Commissioner Scott and...
Questions for Commissioner Cerber? Commissioner Scott?
I'm Craig Scott, Commissioner, County Commissioner for District Five. I have the city of West Branch, the Township of Ogama, which is to the west of us, and then Foster Township to the north. And encompasses the Lake Clear Lake area up there. Contrary to, who was it, Selena? The other county officials that are here that are elected... The other county officials that are here that are elected, that were elected across the county, we are, we have five different districts. So only the people in our districts vote for us, for us. It's not countywide, but that's the only difference. So we, we, like Commissioner Serbrook said, he goes to different township meetings and so do I. I did not make Foster Township this week, but I do try to get to the township meetings and, and, uh, and just touch base with them. They also, the townships also has a, uh, a, a group, a group meeting where they all, all the town, representatives of all the townships meet every three months. And it's called the Local MTA, Michigan Township Association Committee. So we attend that and try to keep in touch with those people. I sit on a number of committees also. Some of the committees have two commissioners on it. Some are just singular. I sit, I sit on the Parks and Recreation Committee, uh, which I do chair that, that committee. And Commissioner Serbrook sits on it with me. We have, uh, a deer, the Deer Park in the north end of the county. And we have an RV Park campground that's right here on the edge of town on the Business Loop. And then in the last couple of years, we adopted the High Banks Park that's over there in Mills Township. And, uh, we, we oversee all those. I sit on the Health Department Board with Commissioner Serbrook. That's a four county board. Two commissioners from four different counties meet months and months. I sit on the Airport Board. Uh, we share the airport, uh, with the city of West Branch. And so there's three, three people from the county there and there's three from the city. And then out of the six of us, we name the citizen at large that sits on the meeting, on the committee. Most of your boards are all odd numbers, just like we're at five numbers, so that there's no ties in the votes. Today, you watched us and we pretty much agreed on everything. But, uh, in truth, we don't always agree. And that's what democracy is, is sometimes you don't agree, but the majority will rule. And, uh, but we try to work it out the best we can. We all have opinions. Even though we're representing, uh, like big groups of people, we still are people ourselves and have opinions and the way we think we should operate. Just like, what's your name? I'm sorry? You have a very good opinion. Help you keep with it too and take jerk. And, uh, I also sit on, uh, what else do I sit on?
Law enforcement.
Law enforcement committee. And I sit on the law enforcement with Commissioner Wiltsey. And we meet with the sheriff and, uh, and his office each month and, and watch how everything's going. It's just, uh, it's just oversight. You may hear that in the news and, uh, at times when they're talking about news reports, oversight. And, and it's just, uh, we, we're here to just look over all the business of the county. And just make sure everybody's department's running okay and, uh, we don't run everybody's department, but we just watch to see. What we do control is the budget and how much money is being spent in every department. What am I missing?
Nice job.
That was good?
It was.
Thank you.
We better stop. Commissioner Wiltsey?
Good morning, everyone. My name is Charles Wiltsey, Commissioner for District Two, which is Mills Township, Skidway Lake. Mills Township is the most populated township in Ogama County. And I'm very proud to work for all the constituents there and we have a few, um, here in the audience today. So thank you for being here. I just wanna say again for you students, thank you guys for being here. I mean, you're our future and we need to do everything we can to support you guys. Thank you. Keep working hard and I wish you the best. I just got a few items to talk about. Um, I had a Mills Township meeting this past Tuesday. Uh, we had the auditor, which is the same firm that we have for the county. Looks really good for this past fiscal year at Mills Township, so that was good to see. Our Blight Officer Steve, which is in the audience today, um, is continuing to do great work. He is really setting the tone for blight here in Ogama County and I can't thank Steve enough for that. I'm excited. Me and Steve are heading up a committee, which is gonna be the Mills Township Blight Advisory Committee. In January, we're really gonna start taking that to another level and basically that'll be, so hopefully we'll have the advisory committee set up by February. You know, we'll start to have, we'll have to, you know, get our exposure out there to Mills Township residents that are looking for help. And these are residents that they want to see their yard. They wanna see the area get cleaned up and be a better place. So we'll have an actual application process where these residents can put in an application for wanting help. We'll, as the advisory committee will go. To work with us if, if need be and they need the, the money for a dumpster to get put on their property, we can put that on their tax rule. But we're really excited about this. I really appreciate all that Steve's doing there. Uh, last Monday, we had a northern commissioners meeting. Um, that's where we meet up in Ross Common. I believe there's twenty-two counties that are involved. It's just a great networking opportunity. Some of the items we wanna work on for this next coming year. One item we keep seeing, you know, obviously is this Axe My Tax. It's really gained a lot of, um, momentum. And they do say that if it did go to a vote, that it probably would pass. Continue to educate ourselves on what that would look like if that would pass. So we're gonna continue to educate ourselves as commissioners of that group to learn that if that would happen, you know, what kind of the climate would look like for county government. Also jail costs. I mean, obviously we know here this past year Ogama County closed Hartfield to a seventy-two hour lockup. We realized that it was pretty much the only option we have and it has worked. Other counties are struggling. Jail costs are, are high and, uh, we're trying to figure out what they're gonna do. Economic development, you know, I feel here in Ogama County, you guys hear me say I'm a board member for the EDC. Economic development's huge. It's how our county's gonna progress. So at a state level, we wanna try to get more involved and see how we can bring more economic development to our local counties. And then work, county collaboration. You know, we know here in the rural counties, if we can collaborate with other counties to, uh, make things great and save money, then that's something that we need to do. Especially with state funding that continues to decrease, I think collaboration is gonna be very, very important. And then state funding is another thing that we wanna talk about. Really make it known to the state that, hey, you know, you guys continue to put things on us as counties, asking us to do things that cost us money, but you are not increasing our funding. There's just no sustainability in that. Uh, I just wanna remind everybody the Veterans Park Survey, uh, you know. Where that survey's coming to an end. There's so many. Is that on you in here?
No, there's a couple back on the table.
There are some surveys here, you guys. This is really exciting stuff, you know, that we approved some property right down the road from here. We're gonna build a beautiful veterans park. These people deserve it. We all know the importance of, of our veterans and taking care of them. So we have a survey right now where we're asking the public to give us their insight on, on what they'd like to see with the park. Animal shelter, Commissioner Serbrook, um, did talk about that. We did have a good meeting about that. You guys heard me say from day one, obviously our county residents passed an animal patrol village. That's county money. And that money is over $12,000 a month going to a private entity. We absolutely 100% need to have consistent oversight on that. So that meeting was important and we'll continue to make sure that oversight is there. Commissioner Serbrook and I have a transit meeting this afternoon. I have an EDC fundraising meeting, uh, this afternoon. Commissioner Serbrook did comment that, you know, the EDC did get a line item back this year and it was greatly appreciated. It was $20,000. We have a great EDC. We have some great, strong people that are on that board and we're doing a lot of good things. So I appreciate the fact that everybody was on board with that money. But I want you guys to know also, like today, we have a fundraising, uh, meeting that we know we can't solely rely on the county. So we're gonna continue to work hard to try to get private companies, for example, Myers, Walmart, to help support us. That's all I have today. Thank you, everyone.
Uh, my name is Jenny David. I serve District One. I serve Churchill, Hill, Richland, Logan and the Village of Prescott. So I wanted you all to know, we, we serve those areas along with sitting on various committees and subcommittees. We have meetings weekly, um, as far as commissioner meetings. Biweekly, regular, regular meetings that we vote on things like this is, and then every, every opposite, like next Thursday will be what we call Committee of the Whole, which is basically a roundtable discussion. There's no voting. We just talk about, um, subject manners, um, do a little research on, on them. Have some guests from time to time if we do have an issue or, um, some concerns or fixing things, um, Committee of the Whole. And then the following week, we, we bring that to a regular scheduled meeting like this. So this is, I believe, my third term. Our previous terms were two years. Uh, this current term was recently changed to a four-year term. So each one of us sitting here are, uh, sitting here for four years and then we will be up for, um, our term will be up. So somebody else could possibly take the seat. I encourage everybody to get involved. People say they don't have time, whether it's at the local or the township level. Uh, county level, excuse me. Um, I work the full-time job. This is, is not my primary job, so I find time. I have learned a lot along the, the way, as I was telling them before the meeting, how great I was when I first started. But I do, we do encourage involvement. Unfortunately, we don't see a lot of, either at the local level or the, uh, county level, uh, much involved. So encourage. Over the last two weeks, I have attended, I attended Churchill. That was a pretty quick meeting. They did not, they decided not on those, to pay those dues at the MTA level, so I'm sure there'll be more to come of that. But not a whole lot going on at Churchill. They got a, they had a few position changes there with this last term, but they've made some smooth transitions and everything is, is going well. Uh, nine-one-one was, meeting was moved up a week, so I attended that this past week. Uh, three trainees are, are training well. They're working nights currently. The director is, is working nights with them, so they're not alone. The nine-one-one board is also a, a great board, very diverse. The AI system is been, uh, it's not up and running. Apparently it's gonna take two to three weeks for the admin lines. Our nine-one-one is a village that residents voted on a few years back, so now they're a private entity and, uh, they have upgrades. They're, they're, it's a great, uh, great area over there. Nine-one-one, the turnover rate unfortunately is a little high because that job is pretty stressful being a nine-one-one dispatcher. But it is something that they do train on site for and a lot of benefits to that job. Also attended Michigan Works. Their Christmas party was this past week over at Gladwin at the Riverwalk. Very, very nice, nice party. I took a previous commissioner with me. They had, their primary, uh, they highlighted an individual from each one of the surrounding counties that has utilized Michigan Works and basically is a success. They had an individual there, a female, actually. They sent us, us for their CDL, CDL schooling they helped with. They helped with transportation. She's now working for Holden Lake, uh, hold commission. She was there. The individual that I represented, um, was from Ogama County. He went and got his bachelor's degree after losing his job. Michigan Works helped him with that process and he's now working for Don Corney. So each one of us had a story to read. The individuals there, they were presented with a war, an award. Um, it's very, very, very touching, very moving. Coletta Air, um, an individual from Mayo County, was his, uh, a single dad, three kids, um, told his story. So each one of these were very touching, very moving. Michigan Works is an amazing organization. A lot of times it's forgot about. But I do refer a lot of individuals there. They help with job placements. They help with, um, resumes. They help with schooling, whether it be trades, whether it be college, what, uh, GEDs. Um, they have a lot of various programs over there, so. Uh, I had correspondence with Ogama Township. I, I was not able to make that one. They've approved their annual resolutions. The Board of Appeals, they talked a little bit about their, um, nothing on that as well. Any questions for any of us? As Commissioner Scott said, our, our meetings are on Zoom now. Um, they're, I believe, recorded for one year. So it's kinda nice. Our township meetings, we used to really, really, uh, make sure we were present for. Now they have the ability to watch these meetings, so we are also open to phone calls. I get probably on average two to three phone calls a week from local residents with questions. We have to do a little research, call them back, so. Did I miss anything, commissioners?
Yeah, we did. It's pretty good. It's a, it's a job I think all of us will agree. It takes a couple of years before you really get acclimated to what's going on. There's a lot of different stuff, a lot of different stuff. Just how we meet together, um. We cannot, we cannot meet together three out of five of us or four out of five. Four, three or four cannot just meet and talk about things that, other than the weather. We could all be at a place like a wedding or, or something like that, but we can't sit down and just have a meeting that, and, and, and talk about decisions. And it has to be public. All our meetings have to be public and have to be in front of everybody. Now, we are gonna go in a closed session here toward the end of this meeting over, over a particular reason. And there's only like six, maybe it can tell us this for sure. There's only like six reasons why.
Minimal.
Of, of a group, uh, the government to go into a closed session and wait in the public. But then no decisions are made in those time. We deliberate, we talk about something. But if there is a vote, we have to come back out into a public session and have the vote. It's not like a, a business where you can just have a meeting in the, in the back room and talk about business. When you're in government, it has to be public and it has to be out in front of everybody. And these meetings are publicly hosted and there's lots of rules about how that is too. You can't just call a meeting and an hour later be eighteen hours, I believe, isn't it?
Any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Serbrook?
I forgot to mention one thing during the West Branch Township report. They had two presentations last night, um, from two different businesses that wanted to take and enter into a lease agreement for the old West Branch Steel building, West Branch Commons, that the township owns now on the Business Loop. They chose Rose Valley Winery, um, to occupy that building. So they're gonna potentially be in there by March the first there. Currently, they have their main, uh, storefront in Rose City. They have a satellite one at the Outlet Mall. They are going to take a move from the Outlet Mall into the West Branch Commons.
Into the West Branch what?
West Branch Commons is what it's called.
Nice.
Where West, with township renovated the old West Branch Steel property. So they're gonna be physically in that, what was the office for West Branch Steel. If you go down there and look, you'll see there's, um, different stalls. They're gonna have a farmer's market in the summertime. They're looking at, possibly having concerts down there in the summer, so, um, they put a lot of work and a lot of money into that. They got a grant for a million dollars. Um, and I think the township put in almost a million of their own dollars.
It looks nice.
It does, so.
Commissioner Wiltsey, did you have any other thoughts?
Just one more thing. Um, I'm also, Commissioner Lay's on with MSU Extension. Uh, MSU Extension's funded here in Ogama County through a, through a village. And I consistently always, um, trying to tell people, you know, educate yourself regarding the different activities that MSU Extension does for our county residents. There are so many different activities that they do and a lot of it's very positive and you can learn so many different things. So MSU Extension is a big part here in Ogama County. And please take a look, check it out. There's so many things that you could, uh, different classes and different things you could learn that you probably didn't even know was an option to even, you know, be out there. So MSU Extension, very important. And then one more quick thing, uh, 4H, Ogama County 4H, we have a very strong 4H. And it's really cool. Um, our transit, one of our buses just got totally wrapped with a 4H wrap. It looks really, really cool. So if you guys are around, you'll probably see one of the transit buses. It's got a beautiful 4H wrap on it.
Okay, item fifteen.
General public comment.
So you ask the, the audience in here if they have any public comment. There are rules to this. We will explain them. Any general public comment? Come on up. The rules typically for general public comments, they have to state their name. They have three minutes to speak. Commissioners typically do not correspond. Commissioners typically do not correspond with them, and they are just speaking to the jurors.
Hi, my name is Janet Smith, I'm here representing the Cardinal Optimus Club of Skidway Lake. We help with the busing to get the students here, so I just wanted to take a minute to say thank you to all of you, all of the elected officials, all of the department heads, and for our school staff for making sure our kids get here for this wonderful educational experience, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other general public comments? Come on up, sir.
Okay. Good morning, I'm Steve Yucus, I'm from Mills Township. I'm working with Charles Wiltsey with regard to the blight in Mills Township, among my duties, that's just one aspect of it. But I just wanted to say kudos to your school system and your teacher for bringing your kids here, this is huge. I encourage you to get involved, all politics are local. You don't have to wait till your R H to get involved, I mean, you can start in high school, I mean, pay attention, watch what's going on, and this, this is huge. My sixth grade teacher, Mrs. Baker, would be very proud of you guys, so thank you for being here, and thank you for all your involvement.
Can you explain to the students what blight is, what it means?
Sure, I can do that, I actually have forty-five ordinances in Mills Township that I'm charged to enforce. Blight is one aspect of it, unfortunately, it's probably ninety percent of what I deal with. And, and what it comes down to is folks who are struggling or have issues, you know, junk cars in the yard, trash in the yard, damaged buildings, unsafe buildings, dogs, chickens that, you know, I work closely with the zoning administrator here at Auguma County. I work with the, the animal control officer, we had Bob Porset, he's moved to Aronak. Our new officer is Dakota Masters, I work closely with him, I work with Sheriff Gilbert on occasion. So there's, there's a lot to it, but the blight thing is a huge problem we have in Mills Township. We have dilapidated campers and just sites that have degraded over the years, and some of the folks are just over their head, and they, they're, they're senior citizens, they can't afford to, or they can't do it physically. And that's one of the reasons Charles and I are putting together a group of volunteers to help these folks. I've talked to, I've reached out to all three high schools, Standish Sterling, Whittmore Prescott, Auguma Heights. We're looking for high school students who are needing, in need of community service hours, we'll bring them in, we'll supervise them, we won't put anybody in harm's way. It's strictly volunteer, but it will help some of our senior citizens who are really in dire straits. And that, and that's what we're working on. Our board just Tuesday night approved the guidelines for our blight advisory committee, so that's encouraging. Now that they've done that, Charles and I can really start organizing and moving forward with it. But that, that's our plan going forward. You guys have any questions? Good for you. Thank you for being here, thank you.
Any other general public comment in the room? Any general public comment on the phone? No general public comment, and now we have a closed session, and there could be business after the closed session, correct?
Correct.
Correct, okay.
I will make a motion that we're going to close session to consider a written legal opinion regarding calculation of a final payout pursuant to MCL fifteen point two-six-eight-one-H.
We have a motion, do we have support? Motion with support, any further discussion? We have to do a roll call as well with closed session.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Charles Wiltsey.
Yes. Yes.
Mark Serbuk.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
So now we are going into closed session. Item sixteen. Commissioner Serbuk.
I would make a motion to approve the final payout of accrued but unused leave balances for the former administrator slash controller Timothy Dolahanti in the amount of $7,986.48.
We have a motion?
For?
Support, any discussion? Roll call vote.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Charles Wiltsey.
Yes.
Mark Serbuk.
Yes.
Motion for adjourned?
Motion to adjourn.
Support?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion adjourned, thank you guys.
Have a good day, everyone, be safe. Guys, I gotta really get back to work for a little bit, we have our transit